Okay. We are going to start with the commissioners' discussion and I'd like to ask Councilman, Council Lady Allen, to start us off.
Thank you. I want to thank all the people again that have come to speak on this. I mean, it's clear that a lot of thought has gone into this and that many people care deeply about how Nashville grows and I appreciate the input that we've received from all directions. There was a reference made to the ULI study that came out earlier that was produced by Stockton Williams whom I've had conversations with as I've tried to educate myself about how Nashville can emulate cities that have been successful and he talked about what true tangible incentives other cities can offer. Those are zoning densities. In Montgomery County, Maryland, where they've produced over 11,500 units, they give a zoning density of up to 22 percent. I've given zoning density bonuses. I've increased zoning 300 percent and the market has still not been able to produce those units for me. There seems to be a difference when Nashville has traditionally given our zoning density away, so that makes it more difficult for that to be something that becomes a new incentive because it's already there. Similarly, other cities give parking reductions. That's already something that we give in our UZO area. Or fee reductions. Our fees are already low. Nashville is a great city to build in and that has been a wonderful thing for us. It creates a limit on the types of true tangible incentives that we can give. It brings us back to financial incentives which, as we've said all along, has been what the consultant recommended as the partner to this bill and that has been introduced and there may be some tweaks we need to make with that, but we believe that that has produced the true tangible incentives that should make this something that works for the development community. I appreciate their concern with keeping growth happening. What I continue to hear is this is a problem because it's mandatory. I have heard some people say the reason mandatory is bad is that creates uncertainty, but it seems to me that that's less uncertainty than "I'm just going to meet with planning and we'll decide how it works." I'm not sure how you go to a bank and say this is more certain than "I know exactly how many units I'm going to make." Again, I will say we have worked long and hard on this. I don't think anybody believes that we are totally finished even at this point. We will continue to receive input and I'm certainly open to having any conversations that we have. I believe that what this bill presents with an entire grid of choices, the developers have the option to choose which income level they would be targeting, they will already have chosen whether they're building three-story, five-story, or whatever and that affects what the set-asides are. I believe there is enough flexibility built into this that it, to me, seems like a very good starting point for our continued discussion. And with that, I would like for us to continue to consider moving forward with this as our basis of discussion as we continue.
Thank you. Brenda?
Thank you. I had a few questions if I may ask. I did want to thank everybody also for coming out. I know this is a really important topic and it's been a very long discussion and I want to thank the staff for taking the time and doing this as well. One of the questions I had was if there was a project that wanted to rezone and the policy didn't support it, would it still go through the same policy amendment process and go through the same, you know, application process and all of that as it would if it was just like now?
Yes. For this text amendment, once a rezoning is initiated, they are asking for additional residential entitlements. Whether it complies with policy or not, this section would apply.
So how, could you just clarify, I think for everybody, how policy would guide the Planning Commission on what appropriate locations would be for accepting inclusionary housing?
Right now, the policies include a lot about land uses, building form, but they also have functional plans as well. And there is a whole section of Nashville Next that addresses housing. In this case, the densities in the building form would still be accepted as they are now under the policies, but it would add that layer of meeting the housing goals of the plan as well. The policies that would support additional density are along the corridors that you would see here, as well as a number of the neighborhoods that downtown, midtown, those kinds of areas. The areas that are within the UZO that are something like neighborhood maintenance, which is solely residential policy and is intended to stay the same as it is, wouldn't support additional density through a rezoning and therefore the housing incentive wouldn't apply.
Okay. So just to clarify, if the policy does not support it and it comes through to the Planning Commission and staff recommends this approval, even though they are trying to get inclusionary housing, we still go through the same exact process, right? There's no -- okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. So I think for the most part, the concept has gotten a lot clearer than the last draft. I think overall, it seems like the incentives do work in a sense that they will try to create a more, you know, clear basis for the developers and they won't be as confusing. I have some questions about the nuances, about how implementation will be done, but I don't know if this is the right time to ask those questions or if --
I can say that some of the program administration is still being discussed. There are certain steps that we need to put in place. Because of the timeline of this bill, we have several months to do that. There are some developments that are going through with the process on the for-sale side who want to provide affordable workforce housing units. We anticipate sort of working out the process with them when they want to participate and then we'll have a process by the time it's actually effective.
Okay. Thank you. I also wanted to ask if there is, if there was an idea to amend this bill, is it possible? Could it be considered to amend this within the two years that we have that would be implemented? Is it something that could be evolving?
Certainly. If there are problems that are identified within the bill or the program itself, we could always process another text change to change the zoning code, the same way that we're doing now.
Okay. Okay. Those are my questions for now. Thank you again and I'll just listen to the rest of the conversation. Thank you.
Lillian?
I've sat on this commission for a couple of years now, certainly not the length of the terms that some of my fellow commissioners, but it's been long enough to hear a lot of legislation proposed, a lot of discussions being had, and a lot of deferrals. And if something seems like it's moving too fast or we don't have a good grasp on it, I'm very quick to vote for deferral because obviously we want to be a responsible commission and not vote things prematurely. And while it certainly can be irresponsible to act too quick, I think it's starting to feel a little irresponsible to me as a commission to not have acted on this yet. There's obviously been tons of time, tons of studies, tons of discussion put in and a lot of energy has gone towards narrowly tailoring a bill towards the city of Nashville. As Council Lady Allen has spoken, Nashville's a unique city. We have unique issues and so a bill is going to have to be narrowly tailored to our city and I think that's what this bill is doing. I'm convinced there's not a bill in the world that everyone will love, so there's obviously going to be things on both sides of the argument that people should or people can take into consideration, people should take into consideration. And as we've heard from Council Lady Allen and from staff, this bill is obviously not in its completely final form. There's discussion that's still going to be had and hopefully perhaps both sides can find a little bit more common ground as the bill is further revised. I think it's a good bill. I think it's gone a lot farther than we thought it was going to go. You know, when we first started on this, it was a pretty daunting process and the last bill that was presented, obviously not very many people liked and I think this has, I mean, this is a big change. This is a big difference and it's a bill I certainly can support and for those who are, I guess, concerned that it's going to be a monumental and forever catastrophic decline in the market. I mean, there is a two-year study. There is a sunset period added in. I mean, there has to be something done. I don't think us sitting here and not doing anything forever is going to work or is going to be good for the city. Obviously, as Council Lady Allen has said and as many people who were in opposition to the bill have noted, that the, one of the main points, I guess, of opposition would be the voluntariness versus the involuntariness and obviously the idea of having the requirements being involuntary, mandatory, would be that it's ineffective if it's voluntary and there's, I'm sure, studies and lots of things that you can cite to kind of just further that point. Is there something you can elaborate on that for?
Sure. The way the bill is drafted, it does not impact existing entitlements for any property, no matter what it's zoned. Right now, if you have any zoning district, CS, or a mixed-use district, you can build what is permitted under that base zoning district without, and it can be residential. You can build as many residential units as you can under that existing zoning. And the only time that this applies is if someone comes to the city and asks to participate in the program by asking for additional development entitlements.
There was some discussion, and if this is not the, I don't want to ask a question that I guess can't be answered right now, but there was some discussion, I guess, about any type of legality issues with the language. Is that an appropriate question?
Well, I will tell you that we worked very hard to craft this in a way that we believed followed the state-enabling legislation. There was legislation, as I think everyone knows, passed last year that specifically stated that we couldn't mandate inclusionary zoning, or mandate a percentage of workforce or affordable housing. So we, to the point that Carrie made a moment ago, if a property owner owns a piece of property now and it's zoned, you know, RM 20, but they want the entitlements of RM 40, then they're looking for a rezone. They can go forward with RM 20 and move right through the going and getting building permits and getting their plans approved without ever having to address workforce or affordable housing. So their entitlements are just as they were before or will be the same before and after this legislation is passed. The only time that this requirement comes into play is when they want to increase those entitlements. So the best analogy that, sitting here, that I can think of would be this is no more mandatory than the bonuses for height and density that we give for green space, for open space, for parking. All those bonuses that you see, that we say in our, like in the downtown code, for instance, and we say that we want additional height or you wanted additional massing, let's put it that way, then there are bonuses. Then you have to go through those bonuses to get those additional entitlements. Well, this is no different than that. And those are all development incentives that we've used, you know, for over a decade now. And so I believe that this has been written in a way that is incentive-based. No one's entitled to a rezoning. And so this only is triggered when a property owner wants to avail themselves of additional entitlements and these, this is an option that you're going to have to use to get to that. So I think legally, this piece of legislation is on solid ground.
That's good to hear. And that's a great point to make, that no one's entitled to a rezone. We've had a lot of conversation as commissioners when something is being asked of us and nothing's being given in return. So if our job as a commission is to plan for a city and plan a city that includes all Nashvillians, then maybe something should be expected in return. And it's not, like you said before, it's not something that's entitled. It's something that they're asking for and so we, as a commission, can decide if this bill is appropriate to decide whether we want to give those rights or not.
Stuart?
I guess that the last point that you were making with Mr. Sloan was the key surprising thing about the discussion before for me. I could be, I could be wrong, but I always thought what the staff was recommending and what Council Lady Allen was recommending was a voluntary program, an incentives-based program. And to hear it referred to as an illegal, under state law, mandatory program was a little bit, I was a little taken aback. It seems, it seems clear that that's not the case, not to say our legislature couldn't pass another bill and might want to.
That's command, yes.
Oh, I'm sure they're monitoring this, some of them. You know, it's a voluntary program. That's what's before us. It's not a mandatory program, creative use of language notwithstanding. It's a voluntary program. And the story of this commission and council over the last few years has been that we have, to the consternation of many people, rezoned a great deal of downtown and midtown without any sort of incentives being a part of it. I've been a part of that. We've all been a part of that, in part because, while I'm not sure it's a majority opinion, I think it's been good for Nashville. I think downtown and midtown probably were underzoned and I think the growth has been good for us. At this point, however, it is irretrievable, I mean, it's unarguably true that we have for various, for a number of years inadvertently, through some neighborhoods but through a lot of downtown and midtown rezonings, eliminated possibilities for future affordable housing and future workforce housing. And with every passing week, we continue to do that. That should not go on any further, in my opinion. I guess the only other thing that I thought was interesting was the discussion about, wasn't quite said, but the implication was certainly there that we're being asked by your bill, Council Lady Allen, to go against the mayor's proposal. Not exactly the way I'd read about it, but I'd like a little more discussion of that to see if I'd read wrong things about the mayor's proposal. I thought it was drafted in such a way that it could, it would work with either of the two potential approaches the council might take. Would you, has the mayor told you she's against this, like the implication was?
Well, we, if I may speak.
Yes.
You know, from the beginning, we have said this bill is part of a package. It will require a grants bill. We are working on that. It took a while to sort of figure out where it needed to live. It was determined that the Barnes Fund was not the right place for it. It became clear that the mayor's office, OEOE, Office of Economic Opportunity Empowerment and Economic ECD, Cameron, what that one stands for, those two departments and finance agreed that they would be appropriate and qualified and willing to be the shepherd for that program. And in several ad hoc affordable housing committee meetings back, we sort of described where we thought that was going to become. And work continued. There's still details. I mean, it needs to be done right, so it took a while to do it. But when the mayor's bill came out, that was the other piece of legislation that we had said we needed to make ours work. It was very flexibly drafted so that it works under a number of different scenarios because the mayor is bound and determined to make something happen soon. And I am tickled pink that that's her, that's her goal. And so I would say absolutely, yes, it works with ours. It works standing alone. It works with a lot of other things.
Okay. That's what I thought. It's not linked to ours. It's not that they're two, that one fails without the other, but it's not certainly in conflict with ours and was meant to work with ours. Ours meaning the one before us today that I intend to vote for. That's all I have to say.
Chairman?
Yeah, that was one of the questions I had and I guess I've got the answer, that the mayor's plan, Carrie, is not in opposition, not at odds with ours, but complements that they work together.
They work together, yes. It's the financial incentives bill that would help implement the zoning portion, so they do work well together.
Tell me a little bit about, when you talk about grants, I, in my mind, if I come in and I can get 100,000 square feet, but I'm asking for 150, as your example was, but then you talk about grants, is this, am I expecting when I come in not only to get incentives for the other 50,000 square feet, but I'm getting some TIF money sort of along with that? Or is it, am I reading that wrong?
The grant program that's been drafted is its own program. And so the way that program would work is that once the building was in operation, and there are some folks here who could probably explain it better than I can, but once the building is in operation, at the end of the year, they would submit a report to OEOE and the Department of Finance and that report would detail how much the affordable workforce rents were and how much the market rate rents were and what the difference between those two rents were and for how many months. And so at that point, all those reports would be evaluated and then there would be a line item in the budget that would cover the amount, cover the difference for each one of those developments and grant it each year.
That's on a rental basis. I was thinking more of the for-sale. So on a for-sale, there's nothing that kicks in. You're on your own. If you ask for an increase in square footage, then you have to make your dollars work on the front end if you're going for sale. Is that correct?
Well, the for-sale portion is not triggered by the request to rezone itself. That would need to be a separate request. The issue is that we're not able to find a similar financial incentive to the rental grant that would make every for-sale development work. And so the way it's phrased in the zoning bill is that if they make an additional request, that is, if the provision of affordable workforce housing units within a specific development and in that pro forma does work and they want to do it, they would be able to and provide, and the city would provide a subsidy, a one-time subsidy of $20,000 per unit within the UZO on a corridor or $10,000 outside of the UZO.
Okay. You know, naturally as a builder, when we talk about incentives, I'm thinking, okay, I've got R 20 and I want to go to R 40. But, and then if I did that, then I would be expected to, you know, to kick in for the, with affordable housing. But if it's AR 2A with a base zoning or policy of, say, R 6, and you come in for a subdivision of 100 lots or whatever, does the same thing trigger that as it would going from a higher density within the inner city? Do they work the same?
Only if the resulting units, even if they're on lots, are rentals, which happens very, very infrequently. And so if it's a rental development, the city would still have the same program if you were within the UZO, the pink area on the map. So a lot of the area shown here, because it's not within the UZO and not on a corridor, the financial incentives aren't available and therefore there's no affordable or workforce housing provided.
I, it's not a perfect bill. There's none of them are that we pass, but over a period of time, they can be amended. The fact that there's a sunset provision in there that keeps it on the radar, it's not going to get lost in a shuffle three or four years down the line. We're going to know whether it works or not pretty, pretty soon. One caution is that Millard Fuller, who was the founder of Habitat for Humanity, had the goal to wipe out poverty housing in Sumter County, Georgia, and he accomplished that. But I was in, Millard passed away five, six years ago and I was in America's last October and asked his guy that took over, I said, "Millard's goal was to wipe out poverty housing in Sumter County and he accomplished that. Is it still that same, is Sumter County free of poverty or low income or poverty housing?" He said, "No, we've slipped back some." So I want to be cautious that we don't declare victory once this gets underway and go home, that we got to keep our eye on the ball. And in due respect to the, everybody that spoke and a lot of your personal friends of mine, you're on one side or the other, but when I get out at night and I go, and this is another step down, these people that are forced out of their homes onto the streets, that if I go to a restaurant in this area of 12th South, West End, whatever, and I see people living on the street or pushing a buggy, I'm sickened by that. It kind of ruins my evening and I cannot in good conscience leave this meeting without voting for this and go home to my warm bed tonight, so I'm going to support it.
Jeff?
We were all here in December in that tension-filled meeting and I think the progress is reflective of the mood of both sides tonight. So thanks to the staff, thanks to Council Lady Allen, Council Lady Weiner, for making a ton of progress. I guess where I struggle, and I agree with everything you said, Jim, is what Mr. Latimer said. I think we're trying to solve this with a bill that's going to get us 80 to 100 units a year and not 1,000 to 2,000 units a year. And Council Lady Allen, I would ask you, if we're that close in working out a compromise with Council Lady Weiner and the people who really know how to motivate the developers with a lot of incentives, does a deferral for a short period of time to work out the differences between the two bills help us as a community to come up with something that's really collaborative, really bridges both sides and motivates behavior versus the perception of this mandatory bill? Because no matter what we say, it's going to be perceived by the Development Committee as mandatory. So does a deferral, are we that close with Council Lady Weiner? Could we work out a compromise? Is a deferral something that we ought to consider?
I'll let this group decide if it's something we ought to consider. I would say if this group decides that we need to do that, we can make useful use of that time. There are clearly other, other issues that the development community feels like have not been incorporated to their satisfaction yet. I feel like the housing advocates have, have come a long way towards saying, "We know it doesn't do everything, but we're willing to work with you on a first step." It would be nice to have everybody on that page. You know, I sort of outlined all the many things that we have given up to get to this point. You know, if, if this group decides that, that there are larger changes that need to be made than could be made in the time that will be allowed between now and second hearing and third hearing, because I may need an expert to tell me, this is amendable on second reading and it's amendable on third reading?
Both, yes.
On both of those. So there is the opportunity to continue to work on it as it currently stands. If we, if this group decides we need more than that, then we'll take advantage of that.
Were there substantive material issues that came up earlier in the week that prevented those differences from being worked out between Monday and today?
I would say, to your, to your point, we have not had a chance for the Ad Hoc Affordable Housing Committee to sit down, and we're trying to do that next week, to talk through any further changes that we may want to make based on suggestions that had been made to us. I think, I think the simple suggestion, we would like it for it to be voluntary instead of mandatory, needs more specifics, so we haven't felt comfortable embracing that one. Again, the committee's planning to meet next week and we'll, we'll be talking about specific suggestions that have been put forth with us.
Is there a special reason why we filed the bill on July 5th to feel like we needed to rush this in as opposed to continuing to collaborate with the mayor's office and Council Lady Weiner to come up with one unified approach versus the separate nature?
I would say the largest reason we filed on July 5th was that we had been dragging along the old version, which was so outdated that it was, although it has been on the planning website for a long time, we felt like we had made enough, enough progress that it was, that was, it was far past time to go ahead and make the new, the substitute, at least the official version that everyone was seeing. We also felt like because of the, the timing, that there very potentially could be enough time to continue to work on differences, staying on the schedule that we've, that we've laid out here.
You know, I know you cite Montgomery County, Maryland, having studied this in several cities where they have passed mandatory inclusionary housing legislation and it has not worked, Austin being one. I'm fearful that we do the wrong Austin being one, I'm fearful that we do the wrong thing as opposed to taking two to four more weeks, trying to really get this right. I said in December, we've got one opportunity as a commission to do something that's generational in its impact and to do it right. And we need to do it right. And we are this close to getting it correct, and we're, everybody in the room is going to be happy. So, I personally would support a modest two to four-week deferral and see if we can work out the differences between both sides.
Mind a last?
Ditto. What did you, most everyone has said. We've come a long way, and it's time to make, you're right, we need the right bill. I really take to heart your points, Council Lady, about density and parking, and the things that we don't already, that we already kind of give away, right? And back to the point of, a change in zoning is not a right. And so, I do believe, given the precarious position that our General Assembly has put metropolitan governments in regarding zoning and inclusionary housing, that we have, that this craft, it is a voluntary. Most lawyers can argue one way or the other, and they will, I'm sure, and have already tonight. It's voluntary. It's going to change the way things happen in some areas of the city. But in my experience, which is limited, but in economic development, companies don't locate somewhere simply for incentives. Companies go somewhere because of, they want to be there, because of workforce, because of a host of things. If the developer wants to build in Nashville, they're going to build in Nashville if it requires that they, requires. If they have the option of adding inclusionary housing to get what they want out of zoning, so be it. My questions, and I don't think we will ever get to a place where the developers and housing advocates are all going to be holding hands, singing kumbaya, and now in agreement. And if that happens, God, I would love it, but I just really don't think it's going to happen. So, you guys have done a commendable job in crafting and taking this to someplace that, we have another two readings, so there can be some changes. And I encourage you guys to continue to discuss those. As a lawyer, I had a couple of just questions. One of the things I've struggled with from a citizen in Nashville is enforcement when it comes to zoning, and it's enforcement when it comes to codes, and enforcement when a house gets knocked down, it's knocked down. You can't rebuild it. So, a lot of times, people will just pay the fine, 250 bucks, knock the house down. And so, here's, and here we have an enforcement provision that requires compliance reporting, but there's no penalties. So, we're giving away money, and am I wrong? Please tell me. So, we're giving grants, we're giving money, and then two years from now, the property changes hands. Is there a clawback provision? Are we considering a clawback provision? Because I would personally think a clawback provision needs to be added.
Yes, but not on the zoning side. So, the zoning side is...
Oh, it'd be in the funding bill?
Yes.
Gotcha.
And so, in the administration of the grant program, there will be grant agreements. There will be audits that are necessary. And so, they, the development community actually has to show what the difference is for the past 12 months. And so, all of that is on the funding side.
Has, having been, again, Assistant Commissioner, where we always got smacked around for not having clawbacks. I think that's a very important provision. Okay, well, that helps me there. The sunset provision, I agree that it keeps it out there. I'm a little, and I understand why nine months, you can have a baby in nine months. I guess you've got time to, I mean, I see why the nine month, but I'm, if we're going to move, I'd like us to move, and nine months seems like a long time. I know the developer will probably smack me. I know you need it, but I also feel like that's a long time. And the word in the wording in the bill says, "It sunsets three years from passage, but it's not effective until nine months from passage." So, then we get into a situation where you pass it September 1st, it's not effective till May of next year, and then by September 1, you're already a year in. So, there's, just seems like a timing issue, and I would like for you guys just to take a look at that. Also note that in three years, you're going to have an election year. Just take a note of that as well. So, this is going to sunset in an election year. Might want to look at maybe making it the next year, or just something just to think about. And renewal provisions. I think sunsets are good in a lot of ways, but there are ways to do sunsets where they're not a standing sunset, but an, you know, I'm just, I think it's something to look into. It'll be interesting to have this conversation again in an election year. That's just my thought. And that's all I, otherwise, I would vote to approve the bill.
I think I'd like to make a few comments, if that's okay. And I actually just had one quick question or clarification. So, the incentives are not applicable outside of the UZO or outside the corridors, but the in-lu fee is. Is that correct?
No. The entire program, because of the way it's structured, it's only, the program is only available if financial incentives are available. And the financial incentives are only within the UZO or on the corridor.
So, the fact that we do have an in-lu fee outside of the UZO? The corridors. Got it. Okay. Okay. That was just one point of clarification. I think that I am probably on the side of, I wish this could go further. You know, when I think about what $2 million is going to do in terms of incenting private development, it's a drop in the bucket, really. So, I would, I think that, as was stated earlier, this is very narrowly tailored. I think we have really consented on a lot. The advocacy community has consented on a lot or come a long ways towards compromise. I think it's really important to point out that, as you just said, if no financial incentives are available, this program doesn't go into effect. So, even if we go forward tonight and somehow the grants legislation that the mayor's office has proposed doesn't go forward, this legislation doesn't take effect. It's null and void. So, while we're saying that these two pieces are standalone, this, the grants provision is what makes the inclusionary housing policy work. So, I think we do need to make sure that we keep thinking about the two of them together. But again, $2 million is not going to go terribly far. And I think, I'm not well-versed on the competing legislation, the alternative legislation, but I think it was still working around that same dollar volume. And if that's entirely voluntary, I just don't really see that that's going to get us anywhere closer to where we need to go. I think saying that this program is only going to get us 100 to 200 a year and putting it out there that there's even the possibility of another piece of legislation that might produce 1,000 to 2,000 units, which is what we need, is incorrect. We don't have that right now. The 1,000 to 2,000 units is going to be preservation, it's going to be new development, it's going to be the whole picture, and that's the whole plan. This is one piece of it. And I think that we have worked on this for a long time. There's a lot of really good things that have come from this. I think whatever is left needs to be handled through the council process. It's not a planning issue at this point. I think from a planning perspective, we have vetted this and come up with a really good proposal. Taking off my hat to be a Federal Reserve employee for a second, you know, we see banks lending in markets all across the country. Plenty of lending is happening in markets that have inclusionary or other types of requirements in place, not related to housing, but various other fees and so on, to cover the cost and the impact of development. We've gotten away with a really good, low-cost environment for a long time, and I think it's time for us to look at the fact that we've got real issues, and we've got to come up with a focused strategy to address those issues. So, it may be a bump in the road from the financing perspective as lenders start to take a look at this. Nashville's raising concerns on the multifamily market from the lender's perspective for a lot of reasons right now. It's not, this is a small piece of it. So, it's the concentration of high-end apartments that's creating concern on our end from a regulatory perspective. So, with that, I would see if there's any other discussion, and otherwise entertain a motion as to where we go from here.
Let me ask a question. Jeff had mentioned, you know, a deferral, but this deferral can be on the council level. I mean, we could pass this with, but in the motion to ask them to consider more time and incorporate Council Lady Weiner's, the mayor's, and this bill together. So, we can pass it tonight and still achieve the same goal.
Yeah. I think the most telling argument was, the most telling comment was, from a planning point of view, we have discussed this pretty well. I wouldn't want to see what you just suggested. That's in our motion, it's just a given. They are the lawmaking body. We aren't. They can pay attention to our recommendation or not, and they've done that before, both ways. But I do think it's true that discussions don't have to stop now. It is at the legislative level, and that's where final decisions by state law must be made on these things, because it's, by our charter must be made. So, I think they will continue to talk. It's just, I wouldn't, I don't think we need to tell them that, because they can do that anyway. They will.
So, do I have anyone willing to, ready to make a motion?
A motion that we approve the substitution order.
Second.
Okay. Oops, all in favor? Maybe by a show of hands. Let's get a show of hands for those in favor. Okay. I think we've got, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and all opposed. Okay. Motion carries. And I think we're done. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Just before you adjourn, do you want to be recorded?
Oh, yes. I would like to be recorded as voting in favor of this, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Move to the room.